Welcome to the monthly meeting of the City of Des Moines zoning board of adjustment. This board has the power under Iowa law and the zoning ordinance of the City of Des Moines to hear and make decisions on requests for variance and exceptions from the regulations in the zoning ordinance, to review conditional use permit requests, and to consider appeals from any decision of city staff in the administration of the zoning ordinance. The members of this board are citizens of the City of Des Moines and have been appointed to this board by the city council. The board members are volunteers and receive no compensation for their public service. I'm going to take a moment here and introduce our board members. On the audience's left is Nathan Blake. Next to him is Cindy Smith. Next to her is Marla Jones. On the audience's right is Justin Gross. Next to him is Dave Gare and Rhonda Sedillo. My name is Mel Pins, the board chair. I'll introduce city staff who will be assisting us today. Legal counsel for the zoning board of adjustment is Judy Parks Cruz. And down here in the front row, Frank Young, senior city planner. Kathryn Drehaas, city planner. Bert Droste, deputy planning administrator. Eric Lundey, zoning enforcement officer. Jason Van Essen, planning administrator. Sue Ann Donovan, deputy director of neighborhood services. Trey Yoshi Chakrabarti, city planner. And Tyler Hall, our meeting moderator. I'm going to take a minute here and cover our meeting procedure for today. For some of you, this may be your first time in front of the board. You may hope it's your only time in front of the board. But we will make this a process that everybody's involved with and we'll take you through this. So don't be nervous if you haven't been here before. We'll help you through the procedure. First and foremost, the board of adjustment is a quasi-legal board. This hearing will be conducted within the procedures and format as authorized by Iowa law and this city's ordinances. The meeting is open to the public, and the meeting is being recorded by both audio and video for a legal record of these proceedings. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. The board is required to base its decision on each item upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the appellant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each item will be announced in the order that it appears on the agenda. Items that are listed on the consent portion of the agenda, which is usually the first few items, consent items are not planned to be individually discussed. They will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless the appellant does not agree to the conditions that have been recommended by staff, or if there's an individual or a board member that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion on the matter can occur. And I'll come back to the consent agenda in just a few minutes. And again, we'll bring you through this. For our regular portion of the agenda, after an item has been announced, city staff will first give a brief overview of the appeal, and they will present any written comments that have been received prior to the hearing. Then the applicant or their representative will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present their appeal. We'll then move to the public comment portion of the hearing, and anyone wanting to speak in support of, in opposition to, or even in neutrality for the appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to present their comments. This will be their one and only opportunity to address the board on the item at hand. Once all concerned citizens have spoken, the board will then ask any additional questions of city staff. And finally, the applicant will be given three more minutes for a rebuttal or other closing comments if they so desire. And again, we'll take you through this so everybody has a chance to participate at the proper time. All speakers are requested to speak only from the podium here at the front of the room and begin their presentation by first giving both their name and address of business or residence in the event that you may need to be contacted for legal notices that are related to the outcome of this appeal. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to ensure that they are respectful of time considerations, and if necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. The board chair will then close any further public comment on the agenda item at hand. The board will then immediately deliberate the request, and the board will make a decision on the appeal here today. Please note that it takes at least four affirmative votes for any zoning appeal to gain approval. If your appeal is approved today, we ask that you wait until at least one week from today's hearing to contact the city's permit and development center if you would need to obtain any necessary building or sign permits that were related to your appeal. This will allow the decision of this board to be documented in the form of a decision and order, which will be provided to you and city staff. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision of this board, or such approval shall expire. Finally, the decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Polk County District Court. So if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. All material written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation is part of the permanent record. And you may contact city staff after the hearing if you need a copy. And if for some reason there's something you want to present you haven't provided to staff, plans, drawings, documents, you'll need to either leave copies or allow them to make a suitable copy before you leave. Finally, a couple of housekeeping items. Please avoid any undue conversation in the audience so as to limit distractions during the hearing. You're doing a fine job. Thank you. Also ensure your cellphone has been silenced. Good job as well. And if you need to use the restroom, just exit the doors here. You don't have to go back downstairs. Just to the right of the staircase, there are restrooms. Subject to the agenda, once your item is completed, you're welcome to leave the meeting, or you can stick around and listen and learn. There'll be a five-minute break in the meeting around 3:00 or 3:30 if that would be needed. So that's our background again. We'll help everybody through it. So we're going to take a look at our agenda. And it looks like Bert Droste is going to help us out with that. Bert, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Bert Droste, planning staff for the City of Des Moines. We do not have any items on our consent agenda that we've received opposition to. So unless there's somebody here in the audience who is wanting to speak in opposition to items 1 through 10, those are eligible to stay on the consent agenda. And then we also had four items on the discussion portion of the agenda that staff would be comfortable moving to the consent agenda if the board is so inclined.
Mm-hmm.
And those are four that we've recommended approval of, subject to conditions, and that the applicants have all agreed to these conditions, and we've received no opposition to these. So those would be items 11, 13, 14, and 15. 11 is a request from the Neighborhood Development Corporation at 3121 Forest Avenue. They're wanting some signs for a new Casey's that would be constructed there. Item number 12, I'm sorry, item number 13 was a request from a small grocery store at 2312 University Avenue in the Drake neighborhood. It's an existing small grocery store. They want to add wine and beer. We've received no opposition to that. Item number 14 is a conditional use for a record store at 506 East 6th Street, Marv's Record. They're wanting to be able to sell wine and beer during special events that are held in their space. And then item 5 is a request for signage at 334 Southwest 8th Street.
15.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
15, yeah.
Item 15, sorry.
That's cool. Okay, so what we'll do here, again, to help everybody through this, staff is proposing adding some items to consent agenda. We'll come back to consent in a minute. But by adding the items, we would not plan to individually discuss these items. We would be looking at approving the requested permits, exceptions, et cetera. So what I'm going to do, yes, Bert, go ahead.
I did one change to the agenda Frank just made me aware of.
Yep.
Item number 3 is a request for a conditional use at 1100 East Beardsley Street. They need a request to continuance to the November 7th meeting so that they can have, they can do the required neighborhood outreach.
All right.
And then one other thing I should mention is that the agenda item for item number 2 has been changed very slightly to mention a few extra greenhouses. The agenda only mentioned one of the greenhouses, and they've, the original agenda only mentioned one greenhouse, but they're actually wanting to build three greenhouses. So we did update the agenda to reflect that.
Okay, all right. Boy, this is like advanced math here on adding and subtracting items. So I think what we'll do here is first of all, what we would want to add to the, well, let's go ahead and do our continuance first, I think.
Yeah.
Would that be wise? So there's a proposal to continue item number 3, which is a conditional use permit near 1100 East Beardsley Street, south side of the city, I believe, to continue that to the next regularly scheduled hearing of this board so they can do some neighborhood outreach. So is the appellant here today for that or not?
Yeah.
No?
I haven't seen them.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, there is somebody here.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for staff? If not, would there be a motion to continue this item to the next regularly scheduled hearing?
I'll move Mr. Chair to move it.
Okay, motion by Cindy, second by Marla. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, that carries 7-0, so we've continued item 3, and we will hear that next month. Okay, so let's go into our, what would have been our regular agenda for a moment. There's a proposal to move item 11, a zoning exception request at 3121 Forest Avenue related to some proposed signage for Casey's general store development. Is there anybody in the audience, this is where you get to participate now, is there anybody in the audience who would object to granting the requested exceptions on item 11? If you would object to that, just raise your hand for the moment, and we'll put it on our regular agenda and hear that item. Anybody here in opposition to item 11? Any hands? Seeing none, okay. Item 13, same process, a conditional use permit request at 2312 University Avenue related to the limited sale of alcohol in relation to a retail business. Anybody here that would object to granting approval for that on item 13? Just raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. Item 14, same thing, conditional use request at 506 East 6th Street to consider the on-premise sale of wine or beer during special events in accessory to a retail record music sales store. Anybody here object to granting that for item 14? Okay, and finally, item 15, a zoning exception request related to some signage at 334 Southwest 8th Street. Anybody object to that item? Okay, seeing none from the audience board members. If there are any questions or opposition, please let me know. If not, would there be a motion to move items 11, 13, 14, and 15 to the consent agenda?
So moved.
All right, motion by Nathan, second by Justin. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries unanimously. All right, so now we'll go back into the consent agenda. So I'm going to read through these in order, and again, if anybody would object to any of these items, just please raise your hand, and then we will move those to the regular portion of the agenda. And if there are no objections, we're going to be looking at approving those items. So item 1, a conditional use permit request at 901 Second Avenue. Anybody in objection to that item from the audience? Seeing none. Item 2, that's a conditional use permit request for the relocation of some greenhouses and outdoor storage and growing areas. It was listed as one greenhouse, there will be three. Anybody object to granting approvals on item 2 for that? Okay, seeing none. 3 is removed. Item 4, a zoning exception request at 401 Southeast 6th Street. Any objections there? Item 5, a conditional use permit request at 10163rd Street. Any objections from the audience? Okay, item 6, a zoning exception request, 6150 Southeast 14th, same sign. Seeing none. Item 7, a zoning exception request at 611 Fifth Avenue. Any objections there? Okay, item 8, a zoning exception request at 2590 Hubble Avenue. Any objections on that one? Seeing none. Item 9, conditional use permit request near 1734 East 12th. Any objection? And item 10, similar request, I believe, in the vicinity of 112344th Street. Anybody opposed to that from the audience? Okay, seeing none. Then if I've got our slate of candidates here on the consent agenda, we would be looking to approve items 1, 2, 4, 5 through 11, and 13 through 15. So if my mathematics add up right, unless there's any objections by the board, would there be a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? So moved by Marla, second by Nathan. All those in favor? All right, motion carries 7 to 0. So if you were here for 1, 2, 4 through 11, or 13 through 15, they've been approved. Give us about a week, and we will get that to you in the mail. Thank you very much for coming down. And we'll let a few people clear out here, and then we'll move to our regular portion Yes, so in essence, thank you, Marla. So I believe our abbreviated discussion agenda is item 12 and item 16. Okay, so for our first item here, up for formal discussion is a conditional use permit request in the vicinity of 1623 East 17th Street. And it looks like Kathryn's going to kick us off here this afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Kathryn Drehaas, planner for the City of Des Moines. So this is a conditional use request to allow recycling within an existing warehouse building and outdoor storage yard located at 1623 East 17th Street. Let's see, so just give you a little context. This is the site, I'm actually going to zoom in just a little bit, the property, but I would say it's a little easier. See if I can highlight. They're essentially looking at utilizing, I believe, this portion of the property. The appellant can provide a little bit of clarification, but they won't actually be using the entire property. And then, again, this shows a little bit more, a bit of a site plan showing that they are looking to, I don't think I can highlight on this one, utilize just a portion of the property that's identified. A couple of site photos to provide you some context. This previously housed a auto recycling business. That one is now gone, and the property owners are allowing, are allowing a family business to move in. That does much of the same type of work that did previously exist here. They are in line to, as you saw with that site plan, they've started working on preparing some site plans so that they can get into compliance with 135 as well. We are recommending approval of their request. We do have a number of conditions, and I'm going to zoom in on that. So these are pretty typical conditions of approval that we put on items of this type. The main one being that they do need to be in compliance with a site plan process under chapter 135. Pavement needs to be, meet specifications. Let's see, basically, proper screening, anything that needs to be done indoors should be done indoors, not stacking above the perimeter fence. Let's see, I'd say, other than the standards, we also added in kind of reinforcing belt and suspenders, the, all of the outdoor storage requirements that we look for as well as conditions. And then, kind of the big one, of course, is simply that the zoning enforcement officer may bring this back to the board at any time it is deemed a nuisance or in violation of its conditions of approval. Let's see, we did receive a few cards back. This is in a generally industrial area, and next door you'll see that there's some industrial work going on as well. And those property owners did not have a problem with another industrial use being adjacent to them, and, let me know if you want me to zoom in on that. And then I've provided a, I've also included the letter that we received noting the summary from the neighborhood, meaning that the property owners did do. And then they gave us a little bit additional emphasis. And then, a bit more of their summary, and then that concludes my portion, unless you have any questions for me at this time. No, we did not on this item, so just the adjoining two properties. Do you want me to zoom in on those? Okay.
Nathan?
At the outset, you mentioned that it's just a kind of a subset of the property that's intended to be used for this purpose, but the request is actually for the whole, I mean, the request and the conditions you put on it wouldn't preclude them from using the entire site?
That's a solid question. I don't believe we put anything in that says that they could not use the entire site. You're right. But they did provide us information, and there is another business on the other side of the warehouse, so.
I mean, I don't know that I have any additional problem. I'm just trying to understand the implications.
Yep.
Thanks.
That's a good question, Nathan. I think related to that, so this is the proposed site plan, correct, Kathryn?
Well, this is a sketch that they have provided with us.
Well, this is a very nice sketch, better than most.
Yes, and they, they still have to go through the proper site plan process and provide a full site plan set, so.
And not trying to throw you any World Series curveballs here, but as part of the site plan process, would they have to directly show those areas where these things are going to be occurring to kind of get to what Nathan was referencing?
Site plan is not my review, is not my forte, but generally speaking, yes, they'll have to identify where they'll be doing different types of pavement, different types of activities to provide an understanding of what type of site plan conditions they would need to meet in those different areas.
Okay, all right. Okay, and a question I've got, so it's my, just, I don't know, colloquial or my memory that there was an auto salvage operation at this location previous, so did the use cease for a long enough period that, quote, grandfathering rights did not allow this to be reopened without, again, having to come in for a special permit and meet site plan?
I'm afraid I don't know when the previous use ceased. Eric says, yes, it did.
Okay.
Our zoning enforcement officer confirmed.
Okay, because otherwise, if one business moves out on a Friday and Mr. Swift wanted to start up on a Monday, be the new owner, there wouldn't be a lapse in use of any significant time, and therefore wouldn't have to come in for something like this, correct?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. Any other questions for Kathryn? Okay, all right, thank you very much. Okay, so for those who are here, the way this next part of the hearing works, the applicant has up to 10 minutes to address the board, and they can give their reasoning for their request. And so we'll go ahead and let the applicant step up, and we just need your name, sir, and your address of business, and you've got 10 minutes to tell us what you'd like to do.
Okay, I'm Mike Swift, third-generation operator of Swift Trails and Auto Recycling. We owned Swift Trails and, we owned Swift Auto Salvage of East 17th and East Washington. My father passed away in 2010. We sold the facility, not where 1623 is, we kept that building, but we sold 1720th Washington as, as, not as an auto recycling facility. We owned Trails and Auto Salvage out on Northeast 44th Avenue in Des Moines, 1600 Northeast 44th. We had an offer to sell it August 20th. We had an offer to sell it August 20th. Took that offer and knowing we still had the building at 1623 E 17th, we wanted to move into that building and sell used auto parts, not operate as a standard junkyard, but sell used auto parts through e-commerce, eBay, and that kind of stuff. We don't, we don't want to let people come into the junkyard. For lack of a better term, we'd rather be called auto recyclers, but it's just one of those things, people understand junkyards, so we use that term. But we just, basically what I'm doing now or want to do is sell, most of the cars that I get in are end-of-life vehicles, which are sitting in people's yards and that kind of stuff, wrecked vehicles and good title vehicles. I work with an auto salvage facility in Van Meter and right now I'm selling him 95% of the vehicles that come in. So I'm not processing anything there, I'm not doing anything there. On the statement of the building, we lease out the north half of that building and the property. So we have no, with the question earlier, that we have no use for that at this time. I don't, I don't ever see a use of it. Downsizing has been a, has been a plus for us, especially with trying to find employees. So just some of the stuff I've been working on. We're also part of a, what we call I-Care certification. As I have a Certified Automotive Recycler Environmental Program, we're a part of that. So all vehicles are drained if we would happen to dismantle them there, if we don't plan on it. So that kind of stuff. So I would like to say another thing. Never been through this process before, working with the city. They've been very nice to me and kind to me and I asked a lot of questions and they've gotten back to me and I'm learning this process, trust me. The drawing that you saw on there was actually done by somebody on 1-800 site plans, which I know I have to have a professional, have to have it stamped on that. But that's where the site plan came from. And so just some of the stuff we're working on. Not wanting to be your typical junkyard in the city of Des Moines, but just a place where these end-of-life vehicles can go. And so that's our plan. Do you have any questions?
Sure. Any questions for Mr. Swift? Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Mike. No questions for the moment. We'll go ahead and proceed with the next portion of any comments or testimony. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request? Seeing none. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Or even just in neutrality? Maybe just with a general concern, not necessarily pro or con. All right, seeing none. Do we have any further questions for staff? Okay, if we don't, we'll go ahead and close the public portion and go to board deliberations. Cindy?
Mr. Swift certainly seems like a reputable businessman. So I would support this conditional use permit for him. I mean, for generations, he appears to be really doing some great things for the city and for his business and for folks who need, who need a place to, for cars to go to with no life left, so. I would support it.
Good comment. I bought some junk parts or used auto parts, I should say, here and there across the city in the decades. And I think Mr. Swift has had a reputation of being a good businessperson in his industry. And from the proposal here and with staff comments, I would be supportive as well. Anybody else have any other thoughts or emotion?
I would like to move staff.
All right, motion by Cindy, second by Nathan. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. We're all very nice here today. So thank you, Mike. Good to see you. Keep up the good work. All right, that will bring us to our next item. Item number 16 is a conditional use permit request for Kingdom Living Iowa at 4,000 Southwest 9th Street. And Catherine's going to give us the overview here.
Hello again, members of the board, Mr. Chair. Catherine Drehouse, planner for the city. As mentioned, we are looking at a conditional use for the property at 4,000 Southwest 9th. They are looking to use this area, this existing building for a, what they are calling is a place of assembly for gatherings of a sober community. I think they've utilized a word that we don't have in our code for it. A clubhouse is kind of what they are looking to do. Just a little bit of context. Stretched a little bit further than my camera wanted to take pictures of, so we're kind of piecing it together there. You can see there's an existing parking lot that they are, they did inform us that they are intending to expand to provide additional off-street parking at this location. And they are looking to use primarily the portion of the building that's facing Southwest 9th. Let's see. In this set, I've got a little bit. So they did provide us with some technical drawings so we can get a little bit, a better understanding of where they're going when they go through the site plan process. So existing parking and then the shaded area would be the additional parking and the improved access from Southwest 9th. And then if you'll give me a minute, I should. I know there's a drawing in here that gives us a little bit more context for the interior of the building. Zoom in here. So the grayed-out area is the part that they are not looking at utilizing for this purpose. So they're proposing some storage, some restrooms, and then gathering space. And it looks like two different entryways, in and out. Just to give you some context of what they're doing internally. So, we are recommending approval of this request. In MX-1, we feel that this is a good location for this use and that this is a well-intentioned request. And while we did not make it a condition of approval, we did include that standard language in our rationale that should there be any time that this becomes a nuisance or has any violations of this process, the zoning enforcement officer can bring it back to the board. So that's just a standard reminder that that is in our code. We did receive one comment card back just outside the 200-foot buffer area. And they are in support as well. I'll zoom in on that. They said they're in favor. They had a few other comments. But we're, we felt that it was appropriate to go with their comment that they were in favor. We also received from the appellant information about their neighborhood communication and meeting process. And then a summary. I can zoom in on any of this if you'd like. We did, they did show us that they did receive one emailed request asking for additional information that they followed up on. If you have any questions for me at this time, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions for Catherine?
Anything from the Neighborhood Association?
Not at this time.
The, if you could go back to that one slide showing kind of the diagram, the interior diagram, was there any mention of what the gray area is going to be ever used for? Or at this time, is it just going to sit vacant?
I believe it's part of an existing building and an existing, or excuse me, existing business. They did have, when I drove by and took the site photos, they did have a Jackson Hewitt signage on there. And so I don't know if that's still the predominant business there. I'm afraid I'm unaware, but.
Okay, thank you.
And Catherine, another one, again, not to be a curveball here, but I see we've got, there have been uses that have been in and out of this building over time. There's been times I'm not sure if it's open or closed or what's going on there. Is there an opportunity to get the pole sign taken down there? Or would that be, is there anything within the zoning ordinance which would have said that, hey, if we don't have a use, the sign needs to go?
Let's see, so signage would be under chapter 134. I might actually defer to Bert on this one, or Eric, but.
It's more of a question, not necessarily a point of contention, but you know.
Might be something that we could also tackle through the, I'm trying to remember if we could tackle that through the site plan process.
All right, yeah. All right, if we need to, we can come back to that. But if you're, just wanted to make a note of that. All right, any other questions for Catherine? All right, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and hear from the applicant, whoever would like to represent the applicant. You've got up to 10 minutes to present your reasoning for us to grant you a conditional use request. And if you want to share your time, you'll have to let me know ahead of time because you've got 10 minutes. So I see there's three of you, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Gary Guidelock with Whitfield Nettie Law Firm, 699 Walnut, Suite 2000 in Des Moines. With me are my client representatives, Michael Madden and Jesse Goodwin. I wanted to just give the board an introduction to Kingdom Living, what they do, why they're requesting this conditional use. Kingdom Living is a nonprofit located in Des Moines that serves over 200 residents who are working against addiction and working in recovery. They provide housing of approximately 100 residents in the city of Des Moines, scattered across 10 sites within the city. And they served over 200 total residents last year. This use would allow for a gathering space to conduct sober living meetings, support group-type meetings. The meetings would mostly occur in the early evening and be concluded by about 9:30 or 10 o'clock. So this, this request would allow to host those meetings in a convenient site and to continue to support the important work that the folks are doing in trying to overcome addiction. Mike and Jesse might have any answers to some of the questions that the board had. I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Okay, all right, questions? Go ahead.
Well, my only question was, how often do you have the gatherings? And you said they're only going to be held in the evening? Or are they ever held during the day? And, you know, is parking going to be a contention with the other business that's there? I mean, that was my only thought, since it's on Southwest 9th, you can't park on Southwest 9th.
Push that microphone towards you, Cindy. It's pointing away from you. There you go. And then hold your button down.
All right, well, now I'm done.
Just want to get you on the record.
Did you hear, did you hear everything?
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Smith, they did, thank you. The meeting, yeah, Mike can answer those questions better than I can.
Go ahead. Since we're in questions now, your time is fine.
Thank you. I'm Mike Madden, I'm with Kingdom Living Iowa, 4,000 Southwest 9th is the business address. So, yeah, the parking is, according to your regulations, so I'm not used to talking the language, so I'll do the best that I can. So according to regulations, according to city code, we can do six, you know, per parking space. And we've been working and looking at that. We're expanding out, the idea is to expand out the parking to get us up around roughly, the interior gets us, you know, at 50 in one space and so on and so forth. We've had that concern. We also, so like the parking increases us up to, I think, right around 130. I don't remember exactly right off the top of my head. But then on top of that, we also own the studio that is at 4020, that's right next door. That, we own that and it's rented to the, we rent that out. So we also have a use permit, a shared parking agreement with them also to help with that parking. So that's how we've addressed the parking so far. You're welcome.
Other questions? So whoever wants to answer this, but since Michael was there, talking about parking now, there may be some folks who it might be more convenient or appropriate for them to, you know, access this by bus route. Does Dart service this location? You got a bus stop there?
Yeah, it's, there's a.
So you're on a bus route?
Yes, we do have a lot of clients that use buses and it's right in between the two buildings, right there.
Okay. And Michael, I think you alluded to this. So are you the owners of the property itself, the parcel?
Kingdom Living is the owners. Jesse and I are on the board of directors.
And how long has Kingdom been the owner of the property?
Oh, that's a great question. What was it, May?
May, okay. So when you own a property, there's going to be a lot of requirements in winter weather. You've got to keep sidewalks cleared, you've got to do property maintenance, keep your lawn mowed. I know these types of operations sometimes rely on lots of assistance or donations or seeking grants. Are you guys prepared to keep the place in good shape there as you carry out your good mission?
Yep, so we have one of our residents, it's actually mowing. Right now, we had a little bit of struggle right at first getting the mow and then we got that straightened up. We've got one of our residents mowing right now. Jesse actually plows snow. So, so, you know, that's going to be our snow removal. We'll use some of our residents as service work and doing some of that stuff. And we also, and I'm going to add to this, we want to be a good neighbor. We want to be, we want to, we want to increase the value of that. I mean, it's a property that we now have and it's like, we want to increase that property. We want to increase that. Not only are we showing what Kingdom Living is, but we're also showing the city what recovery is. And we want to be a good representative of that.
Okay. And are you comfortable with the staff's general conditions that they have laid out for your conditional use, that you can comply with all of those?
Yes, yeah, I didn't see anything in there that jumped out at me.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, Cindy?
Just one last thing. Are the gatherings weekly, daily, sporadically, monthly? I guess I hadn't, you mentioned they're in the evening, but I hadn't heard the.
Well, we have, okay, just to, we have one large meeting that we have on Monday nights that we've, we've actually, that's actually outgrown that space. We held it at Grace Church over on the east side because we've actually outgrown that space for our large meeting. Our plan, we have no gatherings right now because we can't have gatherings. But, but, you know, we're using it as office space and doing a little bit of orientations in there. But we will have smaller gatherings per code. Basically, we're going to go with per code. And it'll, it'll pick up over time and there will be, typically you have maybe some noon meetings and you'll maybe also have like a 7:00 meeting. I don't think it'll be every night, but we just want to use it, the facility. We'll see how it goes.
And during the normal business day, a portion of the building is used by another tenant, is that right? That you've got, what's that general business?
No, that's not being used. The Jackson Doolittle, like that sign, it's just, it's left over there. All the signage is just left over there. The whole building is currently used, not used. And then that back portion that you were talking about, we're using it as warehouse space as indicated on there right now. And we're storing some like donated items there that when people come in off the street or by chance, you know, not people coming in off the street, but when we have residents, they come and we get them clothes and hygiene products and stuff like that. We're storing that back there right now.
Gotcha.
I think they were referencing a neighboring property.
Ah, okay, great.
With parking.
All right, okay. Ronda?
Just have a quick question, you might be able to answer this. Is there, there's nothing like overnights then and people are not residents as the building is housing people to stay there? Or is it just a meeting?
No, there's no residents there. We have no intention of having residents there. We won't, we won't have residents there at all. No housing.
Okay, good question. Okay, well, I think that's all the questions we have. Thank you, gentlemen. We'll see what the rest of the audience thinks. You can go ahead and sit down. Is there anybody here that wants to speak in support of the applicant's request? Seeing none, is there anybody that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Come on up, sir. Thank you for waiting today. And you've got up to five minutes to address the board and we need you to begin with your name and address, please.
My name is Stephen Fattino. I live at 907 Marion Street, Des Moines, Iowa, 50315. My property is directly adjacent south of this property. This property has been very disturbing and interrupting to our neighborhood because the parking lot is not sufficient to hold the gatherings that have been going on there. The gatherings have been going on there since the day that they bought the building. I provided Jesse Torres the last two weeks showing the congestionness of the parking lot and what happens when meetings let out. Meetings start, sometimes people start gathering, I'll use the word gathering, approximately at 5:00, 5:30 in the afternoon. It usually consists until about 8:00 in the evening. I provided the parking lot pictures mainly to show this parking lot. I provided the parking lot pictures mainly to show that this parking lot does not, is not able to hold that many vehicles. They have vehicles parting vertical, vehicles parking horizontal behind the vertical and vice versa. We have people where they gather and park in front of our streets and use other businesses in order to go to the meetings or to attend the meetings. So that was my main concern, is the parking lot, it does not measure in where it can even house, I'm not sure how they're getting by with holding these meetings now because of a fire or anything would break out. Good luck, because there'd be no way to get anything in or anything out. I do observe sometimes that people are being dropped off on, on Southwest 9th because of the parking, and people are being picked up after the meeting on Southwest 9th, blocking traffic at Southwest 9th and watch us being picked up from the meeting. Why? Because there is no sufficient or adequate parking for this building. This building does not support that type of parking, never has and never will. I've been there for 30 years. I know exactly what businesses have been there, I've never had a problem, I've never been to the city council, I've never filed a complaint. So that is pretty much that. I've not seen anywhere in these plans where they're allowing for a green space. I've not seen anywhere where there's a runoff, my, since my backyard is directly behind it, I don't see anywhere in the plans for a green space or to show where they're going to have a runoff for the water. Is the water going to come off into my yard, into my neighbor's yard? This parking lot would come right up within inches of my property line and probably 10 feet from the back of my deck. There was a parking lot there now that does not have a fence up, so when these cars are coming in, they'll back in, and when they back in, the headlights are shining directly into my home. I cannot stop it because I can't get a fence up all the way to the end of the parking lot like it has been for the last 25 years. A few of the people have knocked the fence down, the sections have been removed and never put back up. Therefore, this whole entire parking lot is exposed to me and these gatherings of people. Every Thursday, last week, there was a meeting on the 14th, a meeting on the 21st and a meeting on the 24th. We also have homeless living behind that building. I've had to call the police, I don't know how many times, for homeless going behind that building and staying and sleeping there. And when I called the police, the only thing they tell me to do is contact the planning and zoning, is what they tell me to do. So I'm, I'm very opposed to it, I don't think that it is what our neighborhood needs or wants. We have a lot of small children in our neighborhood and we're just not, I'm just not seeing anything in here where anything good would come out of it, other than the fact of rehabilitation for these people, I don't disagree with. I think it's a good thing, I just don't think that he or this building can actually do what they want it to do. So, the other thing is, is something like this, do, do we have, do we have length of time of the project? Do we have a start date? Do we have a finish date? Has anyone ever measured the parking lot to see how many cars it will hold? Because as far as I'm concerned, it's in violation right now. I spoke to Sue Donovan, I've talked to Jesse Torres, maybe five to 10 times?
All right, do you have anything else you want to add, sir? Your time's about up.
I'll do it.
Would you be prepared to take a few questions from the board?
Sure.
So I'm just going to kick off with a first one. You said there's some homeless hanging out there that may or may not be related activities on the site. Were these homeless people there before operations began?
What do you mean by operations?
Well, as far as the, you, you said they were operating as, back in May already with their meetings? Were these homeless people there like a year ago?
No.
So they've only kind of started showing up once these meetings started occurring?
They've been showing up there, yeah, and, and it's usually in the, you know, and they don't always usually live back there or stay.
Sure.
But they are back there, there are signs of them back there, you can go back there and plainly see.
Okay. And just for the geography now, do you live directly south of this location?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, and then, so, so you have your house garage there to the south, and then you also own an undeveloped parcel as well to your west, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. And Kingdom Living also owns the little hair salon building to your east, are there any activities there related to what they're talking about?
No, no, those people run a hair salon there and they're very busy, so, yes.
All right. Okay, any other questions for the gentleman?
Yeah, it seems like the, the focus of your concerns, I mean, you have, you have a few, but the, the biggest one is with respect to parking and the insufficiency of, there's just not enough parking right now. But they've talked about doing, like expanding the parking lot, but it sounds like you're kind of opposed to that idea as well, is that right?
I'm opposed until I see permanent or until I see a plan that tells me when they're going to start it, when it's going to stop and what the development's going to consist of.
Okay, so conceivably you'd be open to a plan that would expand parking so it'd be sufficient for the space and the gatherings that they have, you just, you want some input on, or you want to be up to, kept up to date on, on what the plans are? And you might still oppose it, but you might-
No, you're correct.
You might come around.
You're correct. That's all I want to see, is something to that. If he, if they were to come out into my yard with concrete, the concrete would have to be, if they were going to come off level, it would have to be approximately three or four foot. Then they would have to put a fence on top of that. If they did that, that would divide me from them and from Southwest 9th, and it would be the end of problems.
Thanks. And Mr. Fattino, you've lived at your residence for many decades, correct?
30 years.
30 years, so generally speaking, what has been your description of the past commercial businesses in that building to your north?
That was Mr. Laser, and that gentleman owned a operation where at the time they replenished cartridges, ink cartridges and such. And he would just have, he did a lot of delivery because people in the offices, but he would have people once in a while pull in there, drop off a cartridge, get back in the car and leave. But it was, it never was a problem or anything.
And that's what I'm familiar with in recent years, but, you know, going back 30 years, has he, had he been there that long doing it?
Yeah, yeah. No, no, Charlie hadn't been there 30 years.
Yeah, what kind of other businesses were generally there?
No, it's never been a problem.
Okay, were they general retail, furniture stores?
Yeah, and we had that little Jackson Hewitt thing in there that wasn't that long. But to be honest with you, the whole time that the other gentleman owned the building, it wasn't really being occupied. So it's never been really, and he built that parking lot, I remember, when he took over the building. So.
All right, great. All right, well, thank you for coming down today, Mr. Fattino.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, anybody else to speak in opposition? Seeing none, before we get back to the appellant, do we have any further questions for staff?
Sounds to me like fencing would be a really major improvement, but I'm not sure that that's in our purview. I just, I'm not sure if city staff can answer that.
Yeah, I, I think we'll want city staff to address some of that, because I'd have a related question. I don't see any appeals for parking unless I miss those, and I know some of the ordinance has changed on that. But how, how has staff looked at parking here or how's that work?
Sure, in order to do the change in use, they will have to do a site plan that would have to meet the current landscape and screening requirements. It's a little different in that this property to the south is zoned RX1, which is a low intense commercial district, so there's probably a lesser screening requirement than, say, along the west property line that is zoned N5, which is a one family or one household low density residential district. So there would be more screening requirements needed from the left-hand side. As far as that site plan, it'll have to meet minimum required off-street parking, and they'll have to identify how large their assembly space is, and then they'll have to provide the minimum number of off-street parking spaces based on that space. I'm not sure how many, if you, Eric, do you know how many spaces they'll need?
Well, I, I guess what I'm concerned about is in the staff report, the proposal says up to 200 attendees, yet no one has sat and figured out how much parking they'll need yet?
Right, well, they would need one per six seats if it's a fixed seating in the auditorium. And the parking is a design standard, so any appeal for that would go to the Plan and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
But you're right, if there are 200 fixed seats, then it would need like 33 off-street parking spaces, which I don't think they could achieve.
Well, and what they were talking about was their plan, I like how every time I talk, everyone's like, who's talking?
I can't see whose mouth is-
Yeah. But they were talking about, I mean, we, we can talk with them later, but they were talking about 130, and I, what I inferred was they were, that was extrapolated by whatever tentative plans they have for a parking plan, right? But, but to the point made earlier, I think it was Cindy, that's not necessarily our purview, it's, it's a city requirement that they have capacity limits based on whatever expected, I mean, the 200 that was mentioned in here is just kind of whatever you guys were talking about, but they'd actually be limited further based on the amount of parking that they could build.
Amount of parking and the building code occupancy requirements as well? Yeah. That's what our standard is, is if, say for like a church or any auditorium, the requirement's one space per six seats. So you're right, or not enough, you mean? Right.
And Bert, the way the zoning ordinance works is, it's not that this is disallowed in an MX1 district, it would be allowed as a conditional use.
Right, it, it's listed on the use table as a conditional use, meaning that it would only be allowed if the Board of Adjustment finds that it's appropriate, and then it's also subject to revocation if the zoning officer determines that it becomes a nuisance.
So, so to make a real broad comparison, so a tavern may be allowed in certain commercial districts, subject to a conditional use permit, which would be the same thing. The, the challenge is to make sure it's still a good fit even within that zoning district.
Right, it has to meet the criteria established in Code for granting the conditional uses in the staff report.
All right, other questions for Bert?
Yeah, the site plan. Right, yeah, the site plan will have to dimension the parking stalls as well, and it would require them to be painted out on the, on the site.
Okay, all right, anything else for staff? Okay, I do see that our illustrious zoning enforcement officer is kind of hanging. Eric, is there anything you'd like to add?
I would just confirm, Mr. Fattino did mention there was enforcement actions going on. Jesse Torres had inspected based on complaints. This initially came for pre-app back in March of this year, inquiring about the ability to do this activity on the property, and they were given the steps they needed to take to follow the site plan and then conditional use process at the time. Since that time, any enforcement has stayed when they filed for the board to request the conditional use, and they've also submitted a site plan for initial review for the use. The question came up about the pole sign. If you read our Code 134 7.3.7, the change of use within the premise triggers the requirement to comply with the monument type sign if they want a freestanding sign and that the, the pole sign would be removed, they would have the remedy of seeking a variance in front of you if that was something they wanted to do in the future. But that site plan process is triggering that pole sign removal per 134 7.3.7.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Well, the site plan, I think I heard Bert say that it would include screening, so is that imposed? I mean, is there a way to say they need to put fencing up to protect the neighbors' vision?
So there's a standard for a certain type of buffer yard that's in Chapter 135 that goes through planning, and they can seek design alternatives to those requirements. As he, as Bert indicated, based on the zoning, a different type of buffering requirement that would include plant material and fencing would be involved with that. They could seek design alternatives to that, but that would be enforced through the site plan review. Once the site plan improvements are in place, enforcement staff does go out and verify the site is in compliance with an inspection, and they would issue in tandem with the certificate of occupancy for the assembly space in the building, a certificate of occupancy at that point in time. Occasionally, we hit the time of year where plant material isn't appropriate and we issue a temporary certificate of occupancy, giving them some time to install plant materials at a different point in time in the future.
Eric, to follow up on something you mentioned, you had said they'd inquired with you in March about this use, I believe they bought the property in May, if I'm correct. At the time, you or others discussed it with them, was there a discussion that, hey, you can inquire about this, but you can't do this unless you have approvals? And it's my understanding that they went ahead and conducted the use, is that correct?
There was some ability to occupy immediately in, in some of the office space. But there was no indication that they would be allowed with the assembly function immediately until they followed those requirements.
Okay, thank you. And one other one, kind of chicken and the egg here, sometimes if somebody has drafted a site plan, it can be helpful for us to see what they're proposing to do. So in this case, no site plan's been drafted yet, is that correct? That's not part of our record?
Well, I just, I just was in the system and I noticed that the site plan had been submitted for review. It might be in the very initial stages of getting distributed. We have a new system, EnterGov, where those reviews are done online through another program called Blue Beam Review. And so hopefully those are fairly efficient. But I don't know if that was available at the time.
Sure.
The materials for this meeting were put together, so.
All right. Yeah, Cindy, go ahead.
Eric, one other question, the number 200 keeps coming up in my head, and we don't have a, we haven't seen a specific site plan to say, you know, X number of vehicles or X number of parking spaces or fencing or, or any of that. So is that, if we were so inclined to approve this, would that number be a hard, fast number that the applicant could come back and say, hey, there was 200 stated, this is how many we want? Or will the site plan dictate? Will the site plan findings say there can only be 150 people or 110 people? I'm just a little bit-
Yeah, I don't know if the site plan would dictate necessarily, because if they would get the site plan approved with less parking than would be, would be the standard in the code. You know, that would be done through design alternative process, so that probably wouldn't be the dictating element. The certificate of occupancy for the assembly space in the building code would certainly come into play based on fire, you know, fire codes and, you know, you always see that posted with the maximum occupancy. I think that'll probably be the more limiting factor. The 200 may have been based, you can ask the applicant, I think, but I'd imagine that 200 was a max based on what their occupant load could be using that space. I don't know if that's their intention to always have 200 folks come into a, a meeting, but I think they probably wanted to be within what the building occupant load could allow.
So to, to follow up on that, because I'm still a little confused, so what if the fire marshal or whatever says the cap is 200, but the parking allotment would only allow for 100? So how is that communicated or enforced to, I mean, there's a sign inside that says limited to 200, but they actually shouldn't be using that, I'm not, I just, a little bit of a loss of how that would be enforced.
Well, I would say either administratively or through Plan and Zoning Commission, that would, you know, that approval would have to be based on an analysis of whether that was an adequate amount of parking or, you know, or didn't, even if it didn't meet the absolute standard in the code. So there's instances where that occurs, you know, in a site- a site plan where there may be less parking than what the standard would say, but we issue a Type 1 or Type 2 design alternative, whether that's administratively or through, through the Plan and Zoning Commission, to lower that amount. So certainly, the site plan would, whatever gets approved on that is limiting to them in terms of what's available or what's, has to be provided through the site plan.
And then you enforce it.
Correct. Now, down the road, you know, Bert mentioned that this could be brought back to the board. Down the road, if whatever parking is approved in the site plan isn't sufficient, and we're still having problems, that can be brought, brought back to the board in that case.
All right. Any other questions for our zoning enforcement officer?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Eric. Bert, is there something you want to add?
I did want to mention, I looked at the buffer requirements, and they're only required to buffer from the neighborhood district to the west. So if the board was so inclined, you could put a condition on it that would require a fence along the south property line as well. That's probably not the best map, but on this map, you can see that the property is zoned MX1, but the property immediately to the south is the commercial RX1 district.
Right.
Then to the west is N5 neighborhood. So they only have to provide a buffer along the west property line. So in hindsight, staff probably should have recommended a condition to require a minimum, say, five-foot setback with a six-foot-tall solid fence along that south property.
Could we just reference whatever requirements are usually associated with N5 for the south, rather than getting into the details and guessing about implications?
Yeah.
And then the drainage concern he had, that would be addressed in the site plan process.
Yeah, the site plan would also have to do a stormwater management analysis.
Okay.
It's probably not going to be real significant since the amount of impervious area, though, won't exceed 10,000 square feet. So I can't imagine the
Retention basin will be huge. Is that what you're getting at?
No, I'm saying
Oh.
It's probably
Oh, as far as the requirement to have.
Required, right.
Okay. But it, it would be my impression from Mr. Fattino, and I just think with the topography, it does drain kind of toward the south, so. But maybe the appellant can answer some of that.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for city staff? All right. Thank you, Mr. Drost. Okay, so the way this hearing works now, the appellant has up to three minutes for any rebuttal or closing comments. So if there's anything you've heard, anything you want to give us answers on, this is your chance to wrap up your argument. Go ahead.
Thank you again. Again, Gary Guydlock with Phil Nettie Law. It's unfortunate that we didn't hear from Mr. Fattino during the feedback process that we had, and we could have addressed some of his concerns with him during that process. But I think a lot of the concerns have been addressed already, but to, just to confirm, we have submitted a site plan that's currently under review. The site plan provides for additional parking spaces. By my count, it's up to 24 parking spaces that would be on the site plan. And our proposed use would be not to exceed the limitations that would be established under the site plan based on either building occupancy requirements for the building code or fire code, or based on the number of parking spots available. So the number 200 was put in at the early stages of this application process, but if the, if the occupancy limits based on the other requirements wouldn't permit that, then we would not exceed the permitted occupancy based on the site plan review. As far as like fencing or screening on the south side of the property, we don't have a problem doing that, if that's a concern. And I think the other thing that I really wanted to address was the alleged improper use that has happened, that Mr. Fattino was discussing. Those are not, the folks who are, those are for orientation, where people are working like one-on-one. It's not a meeting that is taking place. So those are, those are, it's, it's just a one-on-one kind of orientation thing. I think Mr. Madden can probably talk more about that if the board has specific questions about that, but just wanted to clear that up, that those were not meetings that were being conducted. Happy to answer any other questions?
I don't have personal knowledge of that.
That did happen one, that did happen one time when we first got the building. We thought, hey, we can just have a meeting, and we probably had 80 people in there, and they parked on that street, on both adjoining streets. And then we got a call from Sue, and we said, oh, and that was it. So other than that, no, that's never happened.
Mr. Fattino also mentioned some homeless folks or some folks staying behind the building. Is there, I'm not sure, that, you obviously don't have control over that, but he's, that was one of his concerns also, and I don't know if you would like to address that as well.
Ms. Smith, you've encapsulated what I was going to say, you know, regarding any unhoused persons, and we don't have control over that. I don't think that we have any reason
We called the police also.
Okay. So it's not like there are clients hanging out waiting for you, or clients hanging out after the meeting overnight?
No.
They're not affiliated with, they aren't a guest of yours?
We tried to get them out of there.
Okay.
A few weeks ago, they had a, yeah, somebody had a bed back there and everything, so.
Okay. All right, okay.
The police didn't tell us to call the city. They said, just call back when they come back.
Okay. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public portion and go to board deliberation. So what do you all think here? Yeah, make sure to keep your button on or keep your mic closed so we pick you up on the record. So, so you're saying you'd like to keep some similar residential screening requirements if we were to approve this for that property to the south, Mr. Fattino's then? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Other discussion or thoughts on anything?
I must admit, I, the concept I was supportive of, this looked like a pretty good-sized building, but by the same token, it doesn't look like we have a good-sized parking lot. And I still have a difficulty understanding how all this is going to fit if we give a conditional use for something that maybe I'm not sure really does fit the neighborhood. The proposal was for meetings up to 200. That was the proposal. It wasn't a proposal for 40 or 50 or whatever fits. It was a proposal for up to 200. I see some of these conditions here. I don't think that its location, operation, and use would safeguard general welfare of people residing in the area. It appears it could unduly increase congestion. If I go with what I heard from everybody, just with one meeting, they were causing problems. Unless this guy just sits on his deck and watches like a hawk, if they just did this one time, they had problems. And it could diminish or impair nearby values. It could have a detrimental impact. So I don't know that I'm all about just throw in some screening, and that's good enough. But those are my thoughts.
I think they've made their case, and I think everyone's aware that if they don't meet any of those, the zoning enforcement officer will bring it back to us. So that gives me some comfort. I agree with Marlis and think we should, I guess I'd support it and think we should include some sort of screening requirement for the southern edge and trust that, you know, the other city ordinances and requirements and conditions that are in place in the city code throughout the process are going to address some of the concerns we've heard with respect to parking in particular, and then understand that the applicant is going to be motivated to make sure that they're not a nuisance to the neighbors. Otherwise, they'll be back before us. So that's my position.
Good points. Do you want to make that into a motion?
Yeah, I will. I will move staff recommendation and add a condition that the, we include a screening requirement that's the same as, I guess, what's included for an N5 district for the southern boundary as well. I don't know if that's clear enough. Judy?
Judy, is that good for the bar?
Yep, yep.
All right, so we got a motion by Nathan and a second by Cindy to approve the conditional use permit request, subject to the nine general conditions plus the addition of appropriate screening that would comply with normal residential to the property directly to the south owned, owned by the gentleman that was present here. All those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. I'm just going to say no, but carries. So motion carries six to one. So just like our vice chair said, guys, give it your best shot, follow your site plan, be a good neighbor, and you'll be doing good things for your clients. All right, that concludes item number 16. So just a general business besides our minutes. Anything else, Bert?
I was going to have a couple of things. We have to approve the minutes. We have to approve the 2022 meeting calendar, and then I was going to introduce our newest planner.
Yes. Let's go ahead and do the minutes quick. Those that were here last month, any changes? If so, please say. If not, a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
All right, motion by Marlis, second by Cindy to approve. All those in favor that were here last month, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. Minutes are approved. Our schedule for next year, we do the third week in November, December again. Is that correct, Bert?
That is correct. It's the fourth Wednesday of every month, except November and December would be the third.
Okay. Do we need to do a formal approval as well?
Yep.
All right. I'll make the motion to approve.
No.
Second by Marlis. Yeah, right? Oh, 2022. What is? Okay. Then go ahead and make a motion as a second for me.
I'll second.
All right, motion by Mel and a second by Marlis to approve the 2022 meeting schedule. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven to zero. And just as a reminder, for November and December, we will be the third Wednesday, right?
Yeah, so the November meeting is actually three weeks from today.
Yeah, yeah. So for those that want to tune in online or attend in person or as members, yeah. So three weeks from now, we meet again. Okay, anything else?
And then I'm going to introduce Shreyoshi Chakrabarti. She's our newest senior city planner. She's going to be primarily the manager of the Plan and Zoning Commission, but you'll see her from time to time here at the Board of Adjustment as well.
Well, great, great. Well, welcome.
When Eric Lundey moved up to zoning officer, it left his vacant, his spot vacant, so she's filling that.
Well, great. We do think Board of Adjustment's the best, but P&amp;Z's pretty cool, too. So well, welcome to your role here at the city. Glad to have you here this afternoon. Okay, if there's no other business, then this hearing is adjourned. All right.